We're calling the order and sir, if you have, the records indicate all board members present with the exception of Dr. Prince. So item two on the agenda is recess to closed session. So we will now resort, recess into closed session in accordance with section five-five-one point oh-seven-one to five-five-one point oh-eight-seven inclusive of Texas government code, Texas open meetings law and BEC. It is five thirty and we are recessing.
How are you doing?
I haven't seen your car in a while.
Well, I have.
On the bus.
I have a fish.
I had a pill.
He almost took me out of the car right away. He got too fast one time.
You gotta get a better assistant.
I heard you were petting my leg.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have to retreat and do some fishing of the shade when we're done. Hops third. Around five hundred pounds.
So she just made it.
Yeah, I got it. I'm good. What's the occasion?
I just wanted to come see you guys.
I got a born right.
Hey, now.
I was just feeding on that.
I have to come for court selection. I'll be here today. We recommend that.
If you have a question, you can ask.
Where is he?
What's the other one? They all. Yeah. Yeah. And we have a sign as well. Yeah. Oh, that's. Sorry.
All right. Sarah, nine o'clock says seven fifteen PM. We are back in the open session. Appreciate everybody's patience while we're out. That brings us now to item three eight and that's the prayers, prayer and pledges to the Texas and United States. Tonight's prayer will be offered by trustee Geron, the pledges by trustee Warren.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening as members of this amazing school district and we thank you for calling us together. Thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon each and one of us. We thank you for your love and presence in our schools. As we welcome this new school year, I petition on behalf of our students and the campuses they attend that you continue to protect and keep our students safe at school and at home. Bless our district and keep our community with your peace and fill us with your grace so that we may work together to support our students and their learning. Heavenly Father, thank you for our amazing teachers who have devoted their lives to serve our students. Fill them with your strength to lead and thrive in their classrooms and grant them an abundance of your wisdom. I ask for protection over our servicemen and women here and abroad. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for my nation and for God, in this world where everything is just as it is. Honored Texas flag, our religion city, Texas, one state and one God, one and one.
All right, thank you both very much. Item four is public comments on agenda items. Item five, send agenda board members. You have the board packet. There was information in the board. Agenda. The consent agenda has not been modified since, so it is the consent agenda as presented in the board packet. If anyone had questions on any of the items in the consent agenda, that would be a great time to ask.
Just one question on page ten, item seven. It described inventory deletion, but it's an added cost, so I'm curious how the deletions and the plus cost.
All right. Well, that is the actual company that is moving all the furniture throughout the district. And so any of the whole furniture that they are to get rid of, that we determined that is furniture that is no longer active. They do haul out and get rid of that furniture.
Old, old inventory.
Yeah.
Old, not new.
No, no, not new. Zero.
Zero.
Yes. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on item five. I think it is the consent agenda as presented in the board packet.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
My second.
It's been moved by trustee Lowe and seconded by trustee Herrera that we approve the consent agenda as presented in the board packet. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. The motion carries six-four, zero against and zero abstained. Now we move down to the regular agenda. Item six A, consider, discuss and potentially approve the purchase of approximately fifteen acres of real property and delegate authority to superintendent or designate to complete all required documents and requirements. We did, we discussed this particular topic in closed session. I don't know if Eric and King have questions. Eric, do you want to give us a high level again synopsis?
Thank you, Mr. Krensky. The members of the board, Mr. Moran. I think that the easy way to say this, and I'll try to be succinct, I know, sorry. I have such a little voice. I just have too much speaking in public to, so I just, I'll try to make this succinct, which I don't do the best job of. The idea behind this is there are two items. The first one is the proposed purchase of approximately fifteen acres of land within the district. We have a term sheet that we discussed under set recovery in closed session. I do believe that based on the market studies and everything that has been done, the project cost as well as how the information in the packet would come to us as far as the land itself. I do believe it's a good deal and I do think it's something that would be appropriate with health group and everything for the district. We would, if you approve it, we would enter into a purchase sale agreement after that and then we would bring it back to you for final execution. And so the motion would essentially be they shall all be approving, then we move forward on it. We can lock up those terms. We're going to go and do that and you can delegate authority to superintendent and or designate to make sure that we have it done.
Any questions, Eric? All right. So I would entertain a motion on item six A. I move that we, the board of trustees, approve the agreement as discussed under set recovery in closed session to purchase approximately fifteen acres of real property and delegate authority to the superintendent where it does need to complete the required documents and the other requirements. My second. It's moved by trustee Warren and seconded by trustee Blakenjir that we approve the purchase of approximately fifteen acres of real property, delegate authority to superintendent or designate to complete all the documents and requirements. Any other questions or comments for Eric Carter at large here before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six-four, zero and zero. Thank you. All right. And the next item, board member six B is considered, considered, discussed and potentially approved in agreement regarding water development and usage involving an elementary school and delegate authority to superintendent or designate to complete all required documents and requirements. This also we discussed in closed session with Eric and so if you want to give us another high level.
I will give you a brief summation as far as this. This has involved the Turmington Elementary School. Right now we are being served by a well as far as a septic system on this bigger site. We have been approached by another entity and we have actually entered into a tentative agreement with that entity where they will supply water as well as sewage and do several other things to the site, including taking over the existing well and building a new water plant on our site there. That would better certain needs for Turmington and the surrounding area. Cost for water ISD is fairly minimal and the benefit is quite high. I think the agreement is a good agreement. It's phase one of other agreements we're going to have with the Greens team. And I view with ass that I think that's an appropriate one for the October.
Any questions for Eric?
Just one quick question. I might put your administration in on the spot here. Curious, looking at the gallons of fresh water per day in the mountain, I'd take see that's in the board packet. Do you have any idea what gallons used per day roughly on average?
It's got.
Information we can get.
It's one within about. It's within about, yeah. Elementary school using that many gallons per day, five thousand gallons per day is, is quite good because it's a very minimal day, you know, during that time, right? You know, the day is twenty-four hour day, so we don't, we're obviously not there at nine o'clock.
Water usage, eight to seven.
Yeah, seven, seven to four is the maximum time, which is the low point for water usage in neighborhoods anyway. Whereas Kristen, we can ask her how many times she goes to the bathroom during the. Well, we can give you average water usage per month at, or per day at every school. Miss Amber, you could probably pull that up.
I may have to.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on item six B. Make a motion for the board of trustees to approve the agreement regarding water development and usage involving Turmington Elementary School and delegate authority to the superintendent or his, or his designate to complete all required documents and requirements to execute these transactions. Second. It's been moved by trustee Campbell and seconded by trustee Lowe that we approve an agreement regarding water development and usage involving Turmington Elementary and delegated to the superintendent or designate to complete all required documents and requirements. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six-four, zero against. Thank you very much. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the guidance as always.
Next item six C, water ISD professional development.
Hello, everyone. If you'd like to open in your board packet, the topic will be discussed against on page sixty-eight in your board packet. And I wanted to get a little background history so you understand why you have this in front of you tonight. So when you read through probably update one nineteen, you saw that there is a new policy within there called DMA Local. That is a result of Centville twelve sixty-seven from the regulations at last legislative session stating that the State Board of Educators Certification has to design a clearinghouse for required professional development. But that gets passed down for us to look to see what is in there that we need to cover. And then we will actually break that plan too. So when you look at what we have in frame U, beginning on page sixty-nine, just in case if you wanted to look at it yourself, we did provide you a copy of the clearinghouse from the State Board Education Certification so that you could see what they laid out, even if you could look at your electronic version, the hyperlinks are in there. If you wanted to go even further and see what they really mean when they say the required training with the embedded best practices, that you could go look at it yourself. When you flip past the clearinghouse items, then you get to see what we laid out as what I consider, or we as a district consider, the professional development plan for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So when you look at the first, the first items on page seventy-three, those are what we call our district compliance bundle and e-course trainings. And you can look at all the topics there. Those are trainings that identify staff members within our district basically complete every single year during our two weeks of professional development before the school year starts. The next page, when you look at page seventy-four, then you can look at the other trainings that we've identified as key trainings. Some of them are required trainings as well that we will do in those first two weeks. We may do it in the first semester, but then you will also see the ones that we consider ongoing that happen throughout the year at various times in working through those. So you can see the various topics. Then we thought just, this would be our plan. So those two pages, page seventy-three and seventy-four, is what we're asking you to adopt as our professional development plan. But I know some of you like the details to go along with it. So we thought we would give you a little bit more so you understood the full picture of what our district leadership team and our campus leadership teams put together. So behind that in your packet, you will see what we consider our professional development plan that we sit down with the campus principals after we adopt our school calendar each year. Then we sit down as an administrative team of mapping out what we want to do in July and August and how are we going to reach it and how are we going to get there? And so this mapping plan that you will see that starts on page seventy-five and goes through page. Yeah, goes all the way through page eighty-one. You can look at our, what I call, this is the broad district overview of professional development in our school district from basically when we returned after July fourth break up until the start of school. Then behind that plan, we thought you would like to see what we lay out as far as our district professional development days. So there are three days identified within those first ten days that staff members are back. Then you can see what we lay out where it gets down to that detail of what do we do with reading language arts kindergarten? What do we do with fifth grade science? What do we do with the US history team? What do we do with the mathematics groups and teams? This allows you to see exactly what we do and how we do it. This type of plan is what we lay out for every district professional development. I give all credit and kudos to Tony Mystic of working with our principals, working with our coordinators of detailing out those final, like a minute points of it. The other thing you should know is that once you see that broad district calendar plan, that is what our campus principals take and then fill in from there with all their details as well. And so hopefully this gives you a good idea of looking at the topics, looking at the items that we plan to cover during this year within professional development that we did the first ten days when the staff was back, but also on those key, what we call campus professional development days and district professional development days that we have, I call it identified in our calendar all throughout the year. Questions? I know it's a lot of information, but I was like, this is the first time we've ever done this. So we thought it would be great for you to see the full picture of what really goes into professional development planning of working with all our staff members in the district.
And the first two pages that are listed are really what the state's requiring. We wanted you to have the full spectrum of staff development that teachers and staff have to do that are required by the state. It's overwhelming the amount of trainings that teachers and staff have to go through every year on top of, they, they work a whole year, in my opinion, before they even get to see a kid with the amount of required trainings. And it's awe inspiring when you look at everything they have to go through every year and deal with. And it's just an added, added workload to them. We, the state wonders about teacher retention. I think a big part of it is workload. They keep adding to the plate and never taking anything off the plate. So this was kind of, for me, a poignant thing to show, look at everything they're doing besides taking care of kids. And they do a great job of taking care of kids as well.
Any questions?
I'd just like to ask a confirmatory question. Kevin kind of alluded to it. I was a little surprised that I didn't see in SV twelve sixty-seven, any opioid addiction or vaping addiction training, that sort of thing. But I see on page seventy-three, the district has assuming of the substance abuse.
Yes, sir. That's in, it's called a Regenton compliance training. And so those topics are covered within the substance abuse within Regenton.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only comment I had, and Kevin kind of already covered it, but as I flipped through and saw days and days and days. So I bet you probably know just kind of on average, how many hours a new teacher spends? And how different is it for current, like a returning teacher, how many hours do they spend versus how many hours a teacher? Would it be just a new teacher to our district?
No, no, because when you're looking at the required trainings, whether you're doing their compliance bundle through an organization like Regenton or another service center, or you provide it yourself, you're still having to do the trainings. And when you look at the task beach chart that's laid out, they will tell you if it's a one-time training or if it's an annual training. And majority of those, when we sit down and looked at it this summer, they're annual trainings. And so that's when you look at the Regenton, they're going through it. Now, Regenton does a great job of updating their information and making it recent and relevant for staff members when they're going through it. And sitting through myself, I mean, there's engaging as online sessions can be to work you through it. But when we looked at that, that was a much more effective way. A lot of our teachers, we release the compliance bundle trainings in July.
Yeah, so they have the.
And actually, I would say the principals start asking by July one, when will I release it to them? Because their staff members want to get it done during the summer, even at their own convenience and leisure. Because I can start a course, then I can stop it. Even if I finish the whole course, then I can go right back to the point where I ended that course and get started again. When you're looking at the compliance trainings, Mr. Krensky, some of them are thirty minutes. Most of them are at least an hour. Some of them are two hours. And that's just an online two-hour block because of the embedded videos within it that you're required to watch before you can move on to the next section. And then all the Regenton compliance do have an assessment test at the end of the test, at the end of the training. Then you have to score an eighty on it or higher in order to get credit for that.
So off the top of your head, can you take a guess on how many?
You want me to figure out? I would say, interesting, for everything on here, when you look at just the district compliance and e-course, there's two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, I'm saying at least ten, twelve hours right there just.
In the compliance.
In the compliance bundle itself, as far as the pieces that are within the Regenton compliance or that are what we have created to try to make it more convenient for the campus principals, trainings that we've created and put in edge of our stride as an e-course where they can go and watch, whether it be a video that we've created or a voiceover PowerPoint or slide presentation that they can get the information. And so then we can set it up as either they confirm that they've completed it at the end or sometimes depending on who's doing the session, there could be a test at the end of it as well.
Now, for the new teachers, I will tell you, they're new to our district. We get them back a week before we get other teachers back. And we get a majority of that new teacher stuff that they, they have to have, that the other teachers don't have to have. So after a certain date, you look at your calendar, you can pretty much assume that's, that's everybody.
Yeah, we do try. When you look at the overall mapping out for the August PD days, those ten days, you know, we do try to build in what we consider campus or teacher prep time. And so that teacher prep time is time that they can work in a classroom. If they have not done their compliance bundles, we try to give them that time to get these items done themselves. So it's not just on top of everything else that they're doing at that time. So we try to build it in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, I would consider a motion on item six C and that would be to approve the professional development plan for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
I make a motion that we approve the water ISD professional development plan for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three DMA Local presented by Kelly Baron. That's presented by Kelly Baron.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Herrera and seconded by trustee Campbell that we have, that we approve the professional development plans for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, which is DMA Local as presented in the board packet and Kelly Baron. Any other questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries six-four, zero and zero against. Next up is item six D, Water High School FFA Out of State Traveling Plans Being Made.
Good evening. If you were turning your packets to page one fifteen and we're going to find that our FFA team is still doing a lot of great things, I'd like to do two items of out-of-state travel for our students. The first one is Water FFA livestock judging team has been selected to participate in the American Raw Livestock Judging Contest. The Raw Livestock Judging Contest is equivalent to a national contest. Since our, since our students placed third at the state contest, we were selected by Texas FFA judging for our team to go to the American Raw. All those students, they're coming up, the team, there are four students, two chaperones. They plan to travel by rental van and are scheduled to depart on Monday, October the tenth and to return Monday, October the seventeenth. If you look in your packet, you'll see their complete itinerary. I did have to go talk to the, to the coaches because I wanted to know why they were leaving so early and delete things. So one of them sent me an email and I'm explaining to him what it says. They will begin by going to the State Fair of Texas for a statewide livestock judging contest. Along the way, they will practice judging at several ranches and stopping at Oklahoma State University. These ranches will have practice classes set up for judges to work through and practice techniques and reason for placing classes with the help of their coach and other college collegiate coaches and judges. This serves as an excellent warm-up to the national contest. So as they're traveling and then they'll be stopping at many locations, being able to practice to get ready for when they go to the national contests. And so the top four teams that place the state are selected to go to certain national areas. And our team being that we were selected, they're in the state of Texas, they were selected to go to the American Raw of livestock. Is the recommendation that Long Island Independent School District Board of Trustees accept the Water FFA Livestock Judging Team's request for out-of-state travels to the American Raw. for out-of-state travels to the American Raw Livestock Judging Contest in Kansas City, Missouri, attached to the copy of the Waller NSD Board Policy, out-of-state travel, and general information for this weekend.
William, I got a question for you. They're going north and taking a little judging. Did they not get in the Texas Tech?
It's a little out of the way for campus. Texas being as big as it is, so it's a good question. I think we should ask Benny to respond to the email and.
See what he looks like. Well, I'll do that.
Have we got any of these students in house tonight?
When they win.
Yeah, you play to come back when they win.
It's cattle judging, right? So they're not gonna bring home the bacon. Anybody have questions? I'm sure there's comments, huh? No, we just, well, maybe we ought to vote first before we wish them well. I would, so let's do that. Uh, item sixty, I would entertain a motion on item sixty. Make a motion on item sixty, Waller High School FFA Out of State Travel Request, American Raw Livestock Show, October tenth through seventeen, twenty twenty-two, as presented by Benny.
My second.
Been moved by trustee Campbell and second by trustee Warren, that we approved the Waller FFA Out of State Travel Request for the American Raw Livestock Show, October tenth through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as presented in the board package and by Benny. Any questions or comments? Please cast your votes. All those in? Motion carries six, zero. Now, we should wish them well. All right, item uh sixty, Waller High School FFA Out of State Travel for the National FFA Convention Dairy Judging Contest.
All right, this one page, this one starts on page one twenty-two of your package, and it's another group that is leaving in October. Waller FFA Dairy Cattle Evaluation Team has advanced to the National FFA Convention. Uh, the team won the state contest in April and will advance to nationals. Nationals is in Indianapolis, Indiana. The team consists of four students, two staff chaperones. Their plan is to travel by air out of Bushen or Continental Airport and are scheduled to depart on Monday, October twenty-fourth and to return on Saturday, October twenty-ninth. Uh, is recommended that the Waller Independent School District Board of Trustees accept the Waller FFA Dairy Cattle Evaluation Team request for out-of-state travel uh to the National FFA Convention Dairy Judging Contest in Indianapolis, Indiana. Attached again is a copy of the Waller ISD Board Policy on out-of-state travel and a general and general information on their itinerary as well. And so it breaks down everyone that is going as as well as what they're doing each day of the year.
Any questions? Questions for Benny?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mr. Mays, does the livestock team know that the dairy team is flying?
Uh, yes, I think they they do. And that that was part of why I asked the first question of why you why they were leaving so early and the reason why their flying versus I mean, a rat and buzz, a band versus flying, of all those stops that they're on, like, but they didn't know the rest.
Does the uh livestock judging team know, or does the dairy judging team know that their livestock team is gonna be gone longer?
And more during the week. More during the week versus the weekend.
Any other comments?
I like this. It says, no holes in jeans, pants over on the shorts. I like that.
Break it down. I would entertain a motion on item sixty. I'll make a motion to approve the Waller High School FFA Out of State Travel Request to National FFA Convention of Dairy Judging Contest, October twenty-fourth through twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. I second that. It's been moved by trustee Warren and second by trustee Wipinger, that we approved the Waller High School FFA Out of State Travel Request for the National FFA Convention Dairy Judging Contest, October twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All those in? And motion carries six, oh, I think they're in. Stephanie, if you'll let them know that we send our best wishes uh for them, and I know that they'll make us proud. Remind them that there's a heavy construction presence at the airport. And the last I saw, they're recommending three hours before flight down, so. If they don't, if they don't catch their flight, they may be hitchhiked in. Uh, information I've.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, could you get another update on twenty nineteen, Vaughn? For Waller High School, we know it's open now. This may be one of the last detailed reports I give you. I don't know that it's gonna be on ongoing work to finish. I'm just minor changes. Junior High remains on budget and on time. We've finished the east uh gym over here, all of it's being used and up with it, ongoing work. Uh, Schultz Junior High Project, we finished phase one. Again, there's ongoing work there, and it worked, uh started off on phase two in the athletic area. And then Hall of An Elementary Demolition started about ninety percent complete. We're working on some of the material. So here's your high school. The front entry, again, many of you familiar with it. Here's the primary stairs in the center, uh the nurse's office with the clinic.
Stephanie, you are hanging banners on the new school.
Absolutely. Every Friday, probably Marworn.
Spitting holes in the wall.
We're not there yet.
Cafeteria and the auditorium lobby, all cleaned up pretty nice and finished out. Again, the uh main gym. Uh, this is the weight room at the school uh on the left. One of the things, they they don't have the inlay platform, but I can start on that this week. Then you'll see those on the other uh weight room, and then the training room right next door. This is actually the uh weight room at the fieldhouse, the new weight that became in the summer. And you can see the platforms are inlaid into the rubber floor. So like I mentioned, we got substantial completion. Uh, Ramallah continued work out there and bunches of that. Harris County came out and gave us the certification on both the kitchen and the gym concession now. And we're working to get that done on the uh the Bistro. Uplifting lighting and sound are some of the areas where the equipment hasn't arrived yet. Don't wanna use that term. For COVID again, but uh, yeah, uh, they have temporary uh items in place to make it work. Wall graphics are being finished up, our painting left there. Our map, the marquee will come in this fall for installation. Um, we're still working on finished up access control issues, although the perimeter building is secure. Building commission and air balance are nearly finalized, and freight deliveries are still ongoing. Here the rendering of the renovated Junior High that will be coming along here next summer. As I mentioned, the east gym, the new with floor refinish, that's about the only thing. And the new bleachers off to the left, that's really what you noticed. And walls are painted, and then the large speakers, and excuse me, it's Benny will tell me. These are the new lockers and locker rooms. Here is the uh north side of the building. And you can see it's all ready and good, right? We'll actually have brick arriving here uh mid-month, so you'll start seeing, make sure you work starting this month. Here's the old front entry, the left part of that will actually go away next summer when we start demoing a lot of the west campus. And that new entry element, you saw in that render, it'll show up. But you also see the new concrete work with the live and stuff out front. Interior, you see metal stained, metal stud frame walls going up, stairs around, you see a lot of A P I was going on overhead. Again, some more uh A P R up, and you see it's in a real rough state still. But uh, we're actually getting the roof long. I don't have a picture of the roof for you, but things are starting to seal, that's probably uh late fall, early winter, we'll start getting it wet, water tank. Here's the second gym on the right, and you can see a new wall getting rear-asing quickly. More interior shots, larger cafeteria area. They kind of use that, cafeteria becomes a staging area to bring material in and out, in and out from their uh offsite staging of their auxiliary gym. Well, I mentioned the phase one A over at the uh front parking lot is complete. East gym is uh renovation is complete, but still ongoing work. Uh, the last concrete slab four we had in that's that second gym, you saw the CMU going in, done this past month. Anything I talked about interior, exterior metal frames up, walls going up. Roof insulation is ongoing as weather allows. Window flailing, window frames and glazing arriving here next month. In addition to exterior brick, as I mentioned. And if you've seen it, it's been sitting there incomplete for a while, the brand lockup panel at front of the uh library of the old candle, the old west campus, or the existing west campus. Schultz Junior High, the former high school. Again, this is our phasing plan. The uh piece areas are about ninety-five percent complete on renovations from this past summer. And we're progressing into area J identified as primarily the uh athletic area and then a portion of the area D with additional classrooms that we did not renovate this past summer. Here's the new lobby coming in, reception area, as well as the mailboxes in the back hallway, the administrative area, administrative conference room, their kitchenette. Future display case where the former uh reception counter was coming in. Uh, and then here you can see the tile floor and um the wall as you come in from the main entry, looking back down toward the lab uh laboratory and cafeteria. Even the cafeteria is cafeteria. If you'll notice on the drawing on the right, you'll see that glass wall that helps enclose it. So you can transfer through it to actually walk into the cafeteria. In fact, that's a picture on your left. Your main hallway is cleaned up, it's not a visual sight issue anymore, looking down through there. Here's your library, we're getting it set up with her. And then you see the new vinyl flooring on the one hundred hallway. Classroom across hallways at the X and Y. Here's one of the collaborations areas over in the two hundred hallway. You have a large one there, and there's a small little breakout spaces across from the administrative suite over there. So we got our temporary fire alarm tested in phase one. The project actually gets a new fire alarm system that will be finished here uh this year. We gotta get the old one back up in operation. We got it open and ready for school, down to the down to the wire there, but they did open it scheduled.
It went bad, but I wasn't.
So, Hannah, break them legs.
And it was no problem. It was it was ready to go our own.
We'll do it a week before, I have to work somewhere around there. Um, as I mentioned, phase two started, fire sprinkler system is uh an area safe, which is the athletic area started. And then we finalized with the uh with the contract of the canopy and the marquee, so those are both on order now. All of them, which are the former Schultz. Not a lot to see, but I'll show you what we got. About, if you went over to the uh old high school about July fourth, that's what New Hollywood looks like now. It's kind of almost at the top of the demolition period. They got, they have another week to ten days of demolition to go on. Of course, of course, the top area being the heaviest demo area, where there's still much reconfiguration of the walls for uh creating that uh entry element. And it comes straight under the office. So you can see a lot of the ceilings are open up. Again, this one, much like the Schultz project, has a lot of above ceiling work for mostly fire sprinkler, bring it up. But because of the uh renovation work, we're gonna bring in uh fire sprinklers. Here's the library. See, it's opened up, ready, ready to do. Not a lot going in here wall-wise, but there's a lot of above ceiling and a new ceiling going in here, similar to what we did at the current Schultz. Demo area. I think it was labeled teachers lounge, but currently it was offices, but they've done a bunch of demo, you can see walls missing. Here's the new L T I platform on the left down. We'll be bringing in a uh projection screen stuff, and it'll be a nice little meeting space on the hall of men at campus. And that's all I have. Now, I know there's any questions.
I was just watching this, keep it safe, because she was feeling really good reading slides when I'm there.
I think note from Hannah.
Just keep it, I got your back. A couple of questions on the high school, so I did notice um BLK has got fourteen thousand on a punch list. I think that's great. It means they captured every, no, I didn't think that's, and that's very.
Ninety-five percent.
On that side. And that's BLK punch list. We haven't done ours yet, okay?
And the contractor did put a completion list before BLK, so that it worked on a lot.
There's always gonna be something, I guess, the comment I wanted to make was I've been, you know, to a few games and a couple of events, and um I I end up seeing, you know, people, uh, of course, I I notice the destruction guys, right? But they're giving some compliments, they're, they stay real far back, you know, they uh they stay out of the way, they're not intrusive, um, getting their work done. Just curious where they're setting up or where they're housing while uh, because I saw their trailers are going.
What the uh, they're doing a lot of it in the evening, but the craft are working during the day. Our pack parking on the uh home side of the stadium, and then they have a small office up in a storage room on the second floor, the gym area.
Okay. Do you go by the elevator in the gym, you see a back area, it looks like kind of a Rosa Technology area back there, but that's all there?
The dungeon background.
It was just nice to see them out there with a presence, but out of the way, you know, do what they need to do, so.
So that's their field operations, their uh tactical management is in the shared trade with the Junior High Project here on site. So it's a nice thing having them on both projects.
And all all those workers have been cleared to be around kids, uh the lines uh from Mr. Brooks's office for their IDs and their background checks. Because it's uh, it was really, really fun this summer.
Back over to the high school and Schultz Project.
And um, yeah, you you killed me on the Hall of Man update, Mr. Walker. I think there's a, I think there's a principal standing behind you that'll help you up on this. You got dozens and dozens of items on the other thing through the other schools. I know I should flip real quick from the project update. Sorry, any questions?
It's just demo at this point, there's not a lot to show you, the walls.
Scott will completely attest to you, they are on time, because it's just demo right now. You mentioned the submittals are going in, which means nothing's been purchased yet, unless they're purchasing at risk.
There's 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 probably at least fifty percent of the submittals, I'll go back and look at the log. Um, times into the thing, some of the uh major ones to take uh some review with the architect and maybe some recent metals, those are the ones uh that have been very problematic, but it's been the wrong.
Nothing that you're seeing of long lead time items or.
Again, you know, some of the things like the marquee, it might be something that comes in the spring. Some of those uh technology-based items may be something to hang out.
You don't need, you don't need that to start school there, that's that's.
With all the technologies in place, when Schultz was still there, be able to come back in, so it was core curriculum.
We'll be watching.
Remember, it's a calendar, not a line.
No, but the calendar would come.
Those things are sealed.
It's driving like me and Don, you and the ball, I've been to two volleyball games up there. People, Mr. mentioned, can't believe what we have. I need some, Mr. Jackson, I wish we had this. They're they're inscribed, can't believe what we got. I've been, I've been uh pleased with Ramallah, but you know, you also need to recognize the district's involvement in design and BLK helping that issue come to fruition.
And also thanking the taxpayers for having the faith in the district to put this together.
I'd like to exactly, it's turned out exactly as it was envisioned originally, as far as the design and the work expenses.
Speaking of visions, I have this vision of some cash left over.
It's a tough crowd. Audrey, Audrey just made a face.
If you see the cost report I gave you for each line item, you'll see that the, uh, the current budget is, uh, significantly higher than the original money allocation.
Remember, we, we still have three renovation projects going on, renovations of notoriously precarious.
Right, but I was, I was thinking more specifically to the high school, and what's gonna be rolling off the high school, and being able to go over to the other renovations.
And we have done some of that, there's probably still some more money to come out, but we can't really close the books on that until we get them purchasing items, and close the books out on, uh, Gromala's project.
Stephanie even did stuff ordering stuff.
She thinks she's got money, because it hasn't paid away yet.
Yeah, we're over there.
We took it away.
She never had access to it.
There is a total.
So we got this summary, but you got the detail sheet, is it?
Uh, I can, I can, uh, share those with you. I think after last month, I think we, I thought we'd gone to more of the summary level, but I can do detailed specifics for the project, and still have those.
Three hundred expenditures of first thirty-four, so. Our lab. Sure, there's quite an expenditure that.
Same delay should be in August thirty-fourth. Now, and one of the things I will share is, is my detailed report actually kind of stayed more current, because it actually showed invoices in hand, um, where that's gonna be actual payments made.
All right, anything else for Scott? All right, thank you very much, Scott, I appreciate it. Next to seven B Accountability Twenty Twenty Two, over to Kelly Barron.
One, um, I'm excited to stand in front of you to talk about Accountability Twenty Twenty Two for all our ISB. Um, when we look at this, um, I am honored and privileged to stand up in front of you to really represent all of our campus principals, to give you a summary of the campuses themselves, um, but the district as well. So if you'd like to look at two things, um, if you'll turn to page one, I think it's one twenty-nine in your board packet, if you would like to look at the copy of the presentation that we're gonna walk through, um, and another thing I have off to your side, is I gave you this lovely little copy from Lead Forward of an accounting case summary from Twenty Twenty Two. Um, we're gonna touch on some of it, but then I notice if you'd like to read other things about accountability, and this is what we consider the best summary out there, that's very visual, to help you understand, um, the many components that make up the domains within the accountability system. Um, and so, you know, we have not had an accountability overview in several years. Um, the last year we did an accountability overview was in Twenty Nineteen, um, and then accountability was weighed due to the pandemic for Twenty Twenty and Twenty Twenty One. Um, so this is our first time that we have done an accountability overview, to let you know where we are with state accountability, and, and how we're working through that. So let's get going with where we really are. Um, in the presentation, I wanted to remind you about what really makes up our accountability system for academics, um, in our district, but actually, actually, every public school and every public charter in the state of Texas. So when you look at that, there, we call it three domains. Um, they focus on student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. So when you look at those three domains, there's a lot of categories that make up those domains, um, and a lot of data that can come from STAR, but then there's also data that comes from other places, that sometimes are what we call lagging data, because they're a year old, whether it be attendance, whether it be graduation rate, whether it be S A T scores, A P scores, those are lag, lagging indicator data, because you can't get it immediately, because the kids just took their A P exam in May, and they don't even get their results till August, and then the state has to provide our accountability results to us publicly for August fifteenth each and every year. So the next slide really is a snippet from this accountability summary that I gave you from Lead Forward, to help you understand how accountability really works, um, with the three domains. So I told you there are three domains, but it's not like the state takes all three and then doubles it together to give us a score. And basically, it's, it's a best of accountability system. So they will look at Domain One and Domain Two, and they will say the best of Domain One or Domain Two will count for seventy percent of your score, and then Domain Three, which is called Closing the Gaps, will account for the other thirty percent of your score. So it's the best of, and so they're giving you the benefit of, by finding the best score possible for yourself, whether it's on student achievement or that progress score. So let's talk about where we are, let's go with campuses. And so I'm gonna go through what I consider a high level overview, of talking through the campus, of giving you a summary of where we are at each campus, telling you their overall rating, uh, and explaining to you any distinction designations that they earn this year, um, as a campus. So starting off with our first elementary school is Churlington Elementary. Churlington, uh, earned a score of eighty this year, so that would be a B average, and so this is the description that the state gives us for a B rating. Um, it is for recognized performance by serving many students well, and encouraging high academic achievement and or appropriate growth for most students. When you look at Churlington Elementary, we're proud to say that they earned two distinction designations this past year, one in science, because, and when you say a distinction designation, remember, um, every campus is grouped in a group of forty of like campuses, where they look at their socioeconomic status, they look at their bilingual ESL population percentage, and they look at their study population, and they group them also according to size, forty of the most like campuses. It's so unique in our district that, um, we can have, uh, Waller Junior High on Schultz's list, but Schultz isn't on Waller Junior High's list, because they are unique lists. So if we earned a distinction designation, that means that that campus scored in the top quartile or the top ten of that group of forty. So when you look at Churlington Elementary, they received two distinction designations, like I said, in science and post-secondary readiness. Um, when we look at our next elementary school, that would be Phil Store Elementary, their overall score was an eighty as well, um, being what they consider that recognized performance. Uh, Phil Store Elementary did have one distinction designation, and that was in the area of science as well. When we move to Jones Elementary, um, Jones Elementary had the highest academic performance within our school district this year, kudos, Ashley Kenny. Um, when you're looking at that and looking at their score, they had an overall score of eighty-seven this year, uh, for their campus. Um, they did earn one distinction designation because of comparative academic growth, and you will hear me say the statement, growth wins. Growth wins, and adding growth, one year growth to a student, uh, definitely wins in the accountability system, and we're really proud of, um, the growth that Jones had in their campus, um, from one year to the next year. When we move to Holloman Elementary, you can look to see their overall score is a C. When you read what it writes as far as what a C is described as, it is described as for acceptable performance by, by serving many students well, but needs to provide additional academic support to many more students. That is the overall description that the state provides to us. Um, Holloman Elementary, like I said, had the overall of a seventy-six, um, they did not have any distinction designations for the twenty-two school year. When we look at Roberts Road Elementary, Roberts Road Elementary also had a C overall average, their overall score, um, was a seventy-seven, um, they did have one distinction designation, that one distinction designation fell in the area of science. And so moving on to our junior highs, looking at Schultz Junior High, um, their overall score was an eighty, which resulted in a B average for their accountability rating. When you look at their distinction designations that they earned in Twenty Twenty Two, um, they earned them in science as well as social studies, being in that top quartile of their group of forty. When I look at Waller Junior High, their overall score that was earned this year was a seventy-six, um, which was a C, their distinction designations that they did earn, uh, fell in the category of social studies as well. And the final campus looking at is Waller High School. Waller High School earned an overall score of seventy-seven, which turned out to be a C, and they did not have any distinction designations this year. So then when you look at the overall of the district, the overall score for the district for Twenty Twenty Two, um, is a score of an eighty, which is a B average, because it's a reflection of our campuses coming together to give us our overall score, that takes into consideration STAR performance, graduation rate, and C C M R data, as well as that Closing the Gaps information to make that overall score. Um, the district itself is only eligible for one distinction designation, um, and we did not attain that one distinction designation. So when you look at this, there's a great website called TexasSchools.gov. Um, it's a great place to go if you would like to look at information in reference to any of our campuses, and then also, I forgot to share this with you, at the bottom of the slide, on each link, I also did a hyperlink for you within your presentation, if you wanted to go directly to the district, or that individual campus, so that you don't have to go through the site looking for each one of them, um, I tried to make it easier for you, if you wanted to go look at each one individually, um, that's just right down there at the bottom for you, just to hit that link, TexasSchools.gov, and you can look at each one of them. But when you look at that, the website is a tremendous amount of information, um, they will take you all the way down to what we call the Accountability Data Tables, um, for every campus and every, and our district, for each one of the domains, whether it be Domain One, Two A, or Two B, or Three, um, that make up our overall rating. This is another place, if you were curious, and you just wanted to look at what other districts did, and how did they look, and how did they perform, um, this is another place where you can look up any, uh, district or any campus in the state of Texas, and see how they performed with that as well. Um, so we provided you, like I said, a broad overview, I know we've had some individual conversations as well, um, in reference to accountability, to help you understand, to help educate you on the system of accountability, uh, that we work with in now, and understanding how those domains work, and what data from our district, um, impacts, um, our accountability from one year to the next. Um, as we're looking forward to the next school year, you know, there are some key things, um, that I will remind you, or you might say, well, what's coming next? Um, we do have changes coming. Um, this school year, we have what we call the STAR redesign, and within the STAR redesign, there are several things that are gonna come our way in Twenty Twenty Three with accountability. Um, we have to prioritize what we call cross-curricular passages. Um, students will be writing, um, at every grade level, um, now, not only four, seven in English, um, it will begin in third grade, and every single reading language arts assessment, we will see writing. Um, we also know that we will have fewer, um, multiple choice questions, that they were incorporating at least twenty-five percent non-multiple choice questions, um, starting this year on the STAR assessment. Um, we also know that we're moving to online assessments, um, unless we have a, a unique case that we appeal to the state for because of a unique, um, student situation, that they are unable to do an online assessment, um, when you look at the criteria, that is a very difficult bar to meet now for a child. Um, but the positive about that online assessment are all the embedded accommodations that students are, that have access to, that should really and truly help our students on the assessments with those. Um, so we're moving to that, but I'm happy to say that for the last two years, we've been making that push knowing that this change was coming, um, and when you looked at some data that Commissioner Marath, um, shared on, uh, Tuesday, you know, eighty-two percent of the students in the state of Texas already took it online in Twenty Twenty Two, and I would probably even say that we were higher than the eighty-two percent, because we started the push back in, uh, Twenty Twenty One, knowing that we were gonna have to be all online by Twenty Twenty Three. Um, so there are some shifts, we call it STAR redesign, you might hear it called STAR two point O, um, those changes are coming, and we are getting prepared for that, and getting our students ready and prepared for those different type of, uh, question types that they're gonna see. Um, but as, you know, John Fessenden with Lead Forward says, um, it is, uh, better, not harder, um, the content is not changing that they're assessing, they're just assessing it in a different way, and hopefully more reflective of the way our teachers, um, provide assessments anyway, and ask questions within the classroom, it'll be a better reflection of how students are doing. Any questions that you guys have, um, that you have for me, um, or that you have, we have our, I guess, our wonderful, uh, campus administrators here as well, um, and we appreciate them being here tonight, if there are any specific questions for them, but, um, Tony and I are here to answer any questions that you might have.
You had to remind me several times, C C or something?
C C.
College Career Military Readiness, and really the M doesn't play a part, because it doesn't exist, um, because it was there originally, um, because we used to report within P E M S any student that indi, you know, indicated and conveyed to us, and we had proof that they were going to enlist in the military. Um, as Commissioner Marath said on Monday, um, that number, that one year jumped from three percent to almost twelve percent in the state of Texas, where some people may have been coding more students, um, than.
Military ready?
Yeah, military ready.
Apparently Texas is building quite the army these days.
And so the state has removed that component, because they said, because of, I call it, validity of the data that was being submitted and provided to them, and unless the Department of Defense releases it to them, then they cannot categorize military readiness anymore.
Meanwhile, sorry, meanwhile, our, uh, R O T C groups are shining, and we're.
Yes. We don't, we don't need to count that.
We've actually, the T E A has gone to the Department of Defense, and they will not release the name of their soldiers. So for, to prove to the state of Texas that a student from war, uh, ISB entered the military service, we'd actually have to get confirmation from D O D, and they won't release it. So that M really, it's just really college career readiness. The college basically is pretty self-explanatory, you know, the S A T A C T, the milit, uh, the, uh, certain, the career is the industry certification.
Yes.
Which during COVID, took a, took a major drop, because kids couldn't get the contact hours to get those, that's one of those lagging data indicators in, in that accountability system. Uh, the commissioner, and Kelly and I had a, and, and Miss Kenny was privileged, privileged that awkward conversation, uh, of sitting there, asking us about C C M R data and how they want to redefine it, um, we were concerned, we, we do very well on C C M R data, uh, matter of fact, next year, I am really looking forward to, uh, our data next year, which is based on last year's data. And what Stephanie and her team at that high school is going to do going forward. For those in the audience that don't know, thirty percent of the graduating class from Waller High School last year graduated with an industry certification. In talking to one of the, the, the teachers, the teachers in those areas, she looked at me and said, Mr. Marath, we're gonna double our certifications this year, in our program. Uh, now, Chef is nodding back there, so I'm gonna say, yes, he's gonna double too. But, uh, that's what, that's what that high school was designed to do, was to give those kids career opportunities, whether they choose to go to college or not. Uh, we'd obviously love to see them get what they think is the best for them and their, and their families. So I think STAR redesigned, by the way, they redesigned the STAR test, just so people in the audience know and the board knows, his argument was, why are we redesigning the STAR test, we spent millions of dollars on this STAR test, is my question, millions, millions of dollars, probably billions of dollars. They do it every five years, and guess what, it's five years. Even though we took two years of major disruption to public education, we're gonna redesign the test this year. Uh, I, I am, I am not shy in saying, I think redesigning a test that we spent billions of dollars on in five years is ridiculous. Um, it seems like when schools start getting good at it, uh, they change the test. Now, they're saying that the test is not going to be harder, it's just gonna be different questions. Ms. Barron, uh, said it, she's so nice though, when she says things, I'm not. She said there's going to be more writing components on this test. If you remember, three years ago, the state of Texas, state of Texas advertised on Craigslist for anybody who would like to grade STAR essays. And that's when English teachers were easy to find. Try to find an English teacher, somebody who's knowledgeable on how to grade written content now, and they're about to expand the writing component on the test tenfold. Who's going to be grading those essays? Who's gonna be grading those writing passages? Is, I think, a genuine concern, uh, of, should be a genuine concern, parents, of educators, and of taxpayers around the state of Texas. Uh, I don't think this is a good investment of Texas tax dollars right at this particular point in time, coming across the most cataclysmic disruption to public education we've seen since, seen since nineteen eighteen. But that's why I said, Fox, I'm off it, I'm sorry.
On the, uh.
Positive note.
On the C C M R.
Yes.
That should be a good spot for us to improve. On the CCMR, that should be a good spot for us to improve, right?
Absolutely.
The college career, military readiness, if it lags that far, we know students weren't in any programs in this period that we were scored on.
Yes, sir.
And not by their choice, they didn't have the choice, right? We know that last year's graduating class, like he said, had 30%, certification, so we should take the big jump there, and that was in the, the little high school.
Yes.
So now with this, it'll take us two years, right, to get to the current high school, but it should be a significant boost.
Yes, sir. I would, I would expect it to be a significant boost. So when you think about it, you're absolutely correct with that. So when you look at our, most of the components within the CCMR data for Accountability 22 came from the 2021 school year, when we were online and on campus, where the students had the choice as far as what modality they wanted to have their, you know, type of learning. And so when you don't get the contact hours, as, as Mr. Moran said, that's a piece, but then they also weren't able to sit, they didn't have those contact hours, or they chose to be an online kiddo, and they had no desire to get their industry-based certification that year. We would expect to see...
We have one of our CTE teachers who teaches a very hands-on course here. How easy was it to teach culinary virtually?
To be honest, I have no complaints about it because we had fun doing it because of how I was able to structure it, but it had its challenges regardless. And I know everyone, especially within the CTE department, the challenges are different spread across, you know? You've got cosmetology, I couldn't even imagine how that would go, you know? But we did have an issue with the certifications during that time, 100%.
So the class of 2022 will make up Accountability 2023, and so we should see an increase in our CCMR score just from what we call industry-based certifications. Yes, sir.
I'm just really looking forward to that following year with that high school that they're in now.
So that will be Accountability 2024, that we'll get to see that result. Yes, sir.
Thanks.
For me, I think they do that one thing, I think, right, and, and y'all saw it as well, and that's the growth.
Yes, sir.
Being a major component because if you're a teacher, and we say this all the time about public education, you can't choose the child that comes in. You accept every child. You don't know at what level they come in your door at, but you're required to teach them. So for me, it's growth. If I take that child, and I've got that child for a year, and I give them at least one year's growth, I'm successful.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And so, you know, I like that piece. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the redesign. They'll probably remove that.
They have, they're not removing it completely, but there's...
Who panicked?
Yeah. There's a different way that they plan to incorporate, I call it a piece of growth, but it's a weighted score where, you know, kids will be weighted based on the improvement that they make within it. But it won't be the same for next year because their statement is, we can, they cannot compare the redesign test to last year's test.
Of course not.
To make an adequate work measure, an adequate for them. What's the, is that the transition table?
The transition table.
The transition table.
They will, we will measure growth using the state's transition table.
Yes.
And it hasn't been officially adopted yet, but it's supposed to be officially come November, but we already have it, and we've already started work on how that's going to work for our kids and our teachers.
Technically, there's no soliciting feedback on the transition tables, even though one part of TEA released it and said, "This is it."
Yes.
So we're going to give our feedback.
Yes.
They're asking for our best.
Well, that's a good thing. Maybe they won't be easy, I guess they're actually good.
When we're done, I'll tell you the story again, they're asking about it.
Well, and I'll just, you know, end with, I just want to compliment our campus principals again. Going through the year of years, I am so proud of our campuses and just super honored to be able to work with those eight incredible people that we call campus principals because they are the true, I call it instructional leaders in the building. We're very appreciative to have them in that role and leading and guiding each one of our campuses. So again, like I said, kudos and compliments to them on everything. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
We hear it from this district, I'm hearing it from other board members around the state as well, that it's just, schools feel like they're off to such a great start this year. It's kind of like a more of a normal year that, you know, we haven't seen for at least a couple of years. So it's apparently really, really refreshing. It's catching fire. People, people are back with renewed spirit and renewed hope, and so we just hope it carries through the whole year. So hopefully we'll enjoy the year.
All right, next item is eight other topics around agenda items and every night. Item nine, what is it?
Believe it or not, we, we have our end of our first grading reporting period progress report one tomorrow, so that, that ends it. Next, next week, next Thursday, is Waller High School summer graduation. We're all invited. I, I had to think about it, it is at the new high school, not the old high school. Because I'm so used to doing those grad, I'm so used to doing graduations in that auditorium that I was just automatically, my car was just going to take me there. So the school start window closes September 30th, and that's where we really get a good calculation. And then September 30th is also a student holiday, elementary parent conferences, and secondary staff development. And then the big day coming up, and Ms. Fletcher really had some great ideas, we're going to do the new high school dedication on October 12th in the community pep rally to tie in with homecoming. So that's homecoming week, and we get to celebrate the new building and have the dedication and also have a huge community pep rally that night, too, and that, that's going to be a fun night. And everyone, everyone is welcome to that as well. And then we come back for the regular cardboard meeting, and of course, October 14th is homecoming. And Stephanie, I got to say, you, you and your staff, last Friday night, there was a special vibe in the stadium last Friday night. You could just feel, feel that it was different. And just really want to thank all of you for what, what you did last year as principals and as staffs. And, you know, the last two and a half years have been rough, and just this year to be out there and, and doing the things that are going on at campuses is absolutely outstanding. It's, it's really fun to see. I like watching Ms. Patel pushing her treat card to her teachers during the day, Ms. Kenny trying to chase me out of her building and showing me where my car is, you know, Hannah just looking at me going, "They're going to be done, right?" You know, so it's, it's just been a great year. And I'm not saying anything right now because we're on, we're on a good roll for the most parts of the year. And Field Store might be one of the happiest places on earth, to be quite honest, going out there.
Better than Disney World. Absolutely better than Disney World.
They got me to eat a cupcake, which was impressive.
Roll, lemon.
Lemon, which was great, just a great place. And, you know, Turlington, just an unbelievable school as well, and I know Kristen had to be somewhere else, but just thank y'all for the week, too.
I don't know, was it, was it an agent in normal presence at this stadium Friday night of administrators and staff? It's something to be heard of.
We're about the same, we have a little more at the field store than at the high school. New decade day, we see those beautiful churches.
Are they beyond green again?
No, 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 we didn't look anything up this year.
Hey, shots coming everywhere. Shots coming from...
They're saying all the time.
I, I will say, if you go to the auditorium at the new high school...
Oh, it was in the picture?
There's carpeting in the, the atrium of the auditorium that Benny exclusively picked out. And I looked at each other and went, "I don't know." But I will say this, Benny, it looks good.
I know. I saw the vision. I mean... That brings us to item nine, is eight thirty of the year.
This is first board meeting, seeing, able to see our principals. I appreciate y'all, because I really missed y'all.
It's nice to see everyone here.
Clay will recognize the Field Store PTO that it came out to. Nice to see parent groups that want to come out and understand the district working and just kind of observe, so thank y'all for coming as well.
Yeah, I think I owe y'all a visit. I'll get out there.
I make it to Field Store more than I make it to Waller Junior High. Sorry for your surprise. It's, I don't know, it's just, it's, it's, Waller Junior is right here, it's literally two steps, but it seems like that I end up out at Field Store a little bit more. By the way, we, we've been doing lockdown drills across the district, but I've been attending most of them, I think I've got to everyone so far except for Roberts Road, I had a meeting that day, couldn't be there. But principals, your staffs have been doing outstanding. Ms. Pathologist, unbelievable today at Waller Junior High, tough campus. Field Store, just, in awe.
It was this guy right here. She, she did it. She was amazing.
Really, really great. Jones was our first Giddy take, and they let it off and did a, did a marvelous job. But Jamie, it's been nice to see the coordination of all the law enforcement agencies, EMS, for parents in the audience, this is a coordinated response between all law enforcement agencies in the region, along with EMS, helping us do these drills, and we're becoming the model for our neighboring districts, which is, which is nice to see. They're going to come visit us, I believe, tomorrow at Holloman to watch. So congratulations, so just a fantastic job, principals and your staffs, protecting the kids.
And I suppose everyone in here knows that the commissioner was out in Jones earlier this week?
Yes.
Did, did you get the, did he drop off a check? Do you have the check?
Actually, nothing.
I'm like, "Where's the check?" Hold the money.
He, he got the, nothing, nothing disturbs a pre-K classroom like seven people in suits walking in. He said, "I want to see instruction going on." I'm like, "Okay, so is it just going to be like you and Ashley and me? Is it just going to be you and Ashley?" And he said, "No, I, I've got six people with me." And so I got to admit, the kids, he saw pre-K, second grade, fifth grade, fourth grade.
And PE.
And PE. And not saying much, but he liked PE thus. He got the whole shoulders, knees, and toes down, it was down. But he did get to see some of those classrooms, and he was just walking down the hallway and, and picking. So, you know, we didn't, we didn't exactly script it too much, he saw some, he wanted to go and see. We let him go and see, he wanted to see one classroom, they were playing with Play-Doh, and we just didn't have enough Play-Doh for him, so he'd have to keep moving. But it was a good visit by the commissioner.
Anyone else? My clock shows eight thirty-three. We're adjourned for good night, and thank you.